You're live.
Okay. We will call the media network and we start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic which sustains us, one nation, united up, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just about down the middle of that.
Okay.
Can you take a second on that? So how do you want it to end in the fourth? Maybe one second?
Four.
There's more on that?
Well, this is, this is 26th February. This is all new, so I was just wondering. Yeah, I have a, I have quite a bit that I've talked about and he gave some suggestions of things he thought we could do. So, this is Wednesday, if I have my next one, so?
Monday.
Monday?
Again, myself. I can't remember which one.
You confuse us.
I do that.
I know.
I want you to bring the people working.
Yeah.
When he finally goes on now?
It goes on so fast every now and then.
Um, there's four. I think they're all on here. There's a different checkbook or something.
Yeah. It's a bachelor. For Christmas.
That's pretty good.
Yeah. We probably should probably have next.
That's two years.
Well, yeah.
Um, those are probably like apartments or something.
Hey, what the hell would be doing? Like the third? Do we have, does everybody just do their own thing on that or do we do it on our own separate?
No, we get free shipping, so each department current orders as they need it. Right now, we're giving free shipping on anything. So, we're just kind of ordering to be, when it used to be, you had to have a certain amount, then we try to, you know, like do the paper products, like the paper and the, paper towels and the soaps and all that with the, say, you know, correction fluid or whatever.
So what this is gonna tell me is anything that's above 360 has not been paid in which I said.
No, it's just gonna tell you what's, what each person has left.
Right, so anybody that's above 360 is gonna be taking the check next month.
Right.
So there's only a couple of us. Looks like we're on three of them.
What?
Looks like we're on three of them or three. That didn't pay at all.
So this is just a part-time one? There's one right underneath it, right in the hand?
Well, I went through the family, but that was above.
Oh, I'm sorry.
360. What was that on?
I was just like, have the reports you printed or anything. No, yeah, you found it.
So Monday, you want me to discuss?
We can look down, whatever, whatever, whatever. Maybe we'll take that last one off and I don't think that's not something.
I don't know.
What did you want to do the other day? Well, I got all together, we were making out the plans on the, we know the budget order is out, put it in there.
Yeah, well, that's what maybe the end of today, we're just gonna kind of, he gave us three or four things he thinks we should do. So a couple of those things, probably get it started on right now, that will involve the apartments.
So we'll do that after.
Yeah, I'll just kind of give you a rundown of his recommendations. Tell me this problem, I'm trying to. Just don't. Well, let's make it up. So we, uh, with the copiers, we make contact with companies that we lease the, right? So we, we, we lease the actual item.
Right.
But then we're charged monthly a daily upcoming copies.
Right, right. Artisman.
I'm just afraid you're gonna like get out the.
Or maybe. Yeah, it's time over.
Yeah.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah. We're already basically.
We're no hurry.
We're all there.
Well, it's time to deal with.
Say that again.
Well, it's time to deal with.
The deer now.
Well, it's time to deal with.
What's the railroad yard?
That's where we get the culverts. Big culverts.
One says tiny, one says tank car. So this is the actual type of study of the culverts that we buy and what is?
The tech cars that buy.
Is the bigger culvert?
They cut the ends off and some of them are half a hundred.
So is this inventory we're purchasing?
No, they already use it. They use it.
Uh, for, for this particular project?
Right.
There were one that went on over by.
Two hundred and thirty first Team Davis. And, uh, we're difficult to put smaller, but it.
And like, you looked at, okay, you see we're not sure when we go back.
After about two vendors that dealt with road and road issues, I just skipped them.
I specified over, uh, style, I don't know.
I probably would have found it interesting, but.
Just because of the different lengths, I mean, it's.
Different.
The different lengths and they don't have, just that's what they.
Well, yeah.
I mean, you could.
They, they will do whatever you want, but.
That is safe way.
They sell oilfield bikes, so up to three feet of height.
Oh, so.
And many tank cars.
Was part of the agreement, as he said, you could go back and take it out.
If people price to be colder.
We were talking about this the other day. Yeah, and he said that we didn't have to pay it in advance. Oh, we came out of that. That you couldn't pay it, which essentially we're paying.
Right.
But it'll come back in the very.
Right, and then, yeah, we would say.
For those red books.
Part of the agreement. So then this particular item, the extra millimetre to there if it gets collected, is that's the right part of the.
Right.
No, right. Came standard, it's right there, chocolate.
Sir Ronnie has something in common. I don't drink coffee either, like it.
I don't think it is.
My mom's jerky.
It's probably, there's another cover.
Yeah.
You can put so much stuff in it to keep from tasting my coffee, but it's high waste point.
I gotta have sugar, I gotta have cream. I'll take a hot tea, what's in the pot? Either one.
Yeah.
Well, that would be your first one. That could be the first one.
She's done. I'm wondering if she's. That was her name?
Two, first one.
Yeah, that's, I can call upstairs and then we'll check that, but I won't risk a possibility. Her name didn't change.
So it's.
Yeah, it's this one. And, uh, the other thing I don't see is, I thought half the way is the team coming out too.
That's good. Uh, she's.
She's up, she's up here. But I thought. It's how you do it. Unless it's the, uh.
That is correct, you would just test.
So then these payouts of the vacation in the main chart, that's.
Yes.
In, yeah.
Yes.
Um, when, how can we, when's her last name? For how?
I think it's just, uh, sometime today, I think it's what we're talking about. If we got a server.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that would be the last year I'd be done, so how about? I may say that to you in person.
Yeah, okay.
Do you need some of this or something?
I, yeah, we visited by email and sometime today, we're gonna look at what he has in his room and then determine how much space he actually needs and then look for that to make sure.
I see you're in court.
Just make sure he has enough room for what he's here, which yes, he should do. Um, so I told him that we could look at upstairs and see, but I hadn't thought about the learning recommended. I just, I think it's limited at once, I don't really envision how big it is or what.
I don't know much because he has it up here, but might.
It's quite a bit spread out, I think that it could make.
And we need to move those five hundred pounds up where Tim was.
The, you'll have to ship, there's several in there. It actually works out well that the majority of people took their amount of shit.
Yeah, all right. Ron, can I read these together?
Yes.
All right, so I make a motion, I would pay the bills in the amount of $240,012.24. I would pay the December payroll in the amount of $779,623.93. Second, all of us in here, say aye.
Aye.
And if you say it was not, motion carries. That was a long way. Stand side for us, please.
What was it? Yeah, so hold on, I need to do that.
No, it's not.
You take those two and then subtract it from that.
So it's about thirteen thousand. You have one, we make an all of that's on. The sample work right there.
Yes, um, this, this is the actual.
Right. If the sample one, you make all of it's in. So that's the one. Let's see, you go back in six or two times. I don't need this.
Yes, we can look at what was currently on here and then I kind of calculated.
The one we're looking at is, uh, sort of.
Yeah, so this is what's current, I already know what's current and I kind of remember my estimate on the number to be increased it, I don't, but we had to talk about. Well, currently it's forty, twelve and fifteen.
So that, yeah. Forty, one, fourteen.
Currently it's four. Eight. It's currently, this is in the odd, so currently it's four eight twelve. And I think I'll get to figuring on six, ten and leaving those.
And that's for, that was for Ron.
So you're adding on another division? I would just leave the division that I thought.
I didn't know that was a issue. I thought it was odd, so.
So this is the most recent. So currently, if you look at the four eight twelve and fourteen, it comes to six, twelve, eighteen and eleven days. So on my figuring, if you had six out, let's speak as to nine days, which is almost two weeks. Fifteen days is gonna be three weeks. And then if you leave those as they are, it's very half weeks or two weeks.
Are you catching on?
Now, if there's something else I looked at, if you, if you. Also add in just holiday pay, it also gives holidays, is it twelve days?
Twelve or thirteen.
How many paid holidays?
Hold on. And then you guys got to decide what's about that new one next year.
Right.
If you get twelve paid holidays. Four, five. Six, seven, eight, nine, ten, pretty much with Christmas and the new holiday, it's ten.
Christmas is always a reason.
So I'm counting it as one day, so it's ten days and then we have to decide about the new. Because which is Presidents, or Mark Zuckerberg Presidents' Day, that's two. Then Memorial Day, Fourth of July. Um, so that's four and then, um. Labor Day. Veterans Day, two of Thanksgiving, one at Christmas, one at New Year's, that's ten.
And then one discretion I did.
Right, I mean, that's what you've done to pass, that's what you've done to pass.
But I mean, that's just fun estimating I had done those six and ten, twelve fourteen. I don't want you to think down that.
Well, bring your numbers out, I'll throw it out on the conversation area. You ready for it?
Yes, I can go back and help. Okay.
So.
Yeah, if we're gonna start at years two.
So from zero to one. If you were to go from a four hour curable to a six hour curable, then that goes to a total of nine days, which is almost two weeks. Um, after one year, which would be year one to nine, it looks like. If you went from eight to ten. That gives fifteen days, which breaks down to three weeks.
That's a lot, aren't there? But that's good, I mean.
So then the other two, I just kind of left them as now, which was twelve and fourteen. Is that right, Ron? Twelve and fourteen? So that comes to eighteen days, which is thirty point six weeks. And then fourteen is twenty one days, which I calculated in four point two weeks. So if my calculation.
And what's the years on the management's ten?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the twelve hour. So that would be the combined PTO days. Or if you wanna look at it in weeks, basically, almost it's one point eight weeks.
And that's there in those on a days.
A R days. Now, what I kind of added in was, just to give a perspective of total days off. I had twelve paid holidays, so that's a little bit wrong. Twelve paid holidays was about two point.
It's still two more weeks.
It's two more weeks. So like a person from year one, zero to one, if they have nine days, that's one point eight weeks plus two more in holidays. So someone from zero to one would get three, up to three weeks paid off. If you're, including holidays.
You'd have two four weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry.
And you put a discretionary in a bit of that and then you're there.
Well, I guess that's true. I had four point two total. Nine days is one point eight and then I have two point four for the holidays, so around four weeks. So someone from zero to one here totally can earn and have, some of it they're not earning, they just, they're getting the holidays. That's four weeks. The next one, if you're at the ten hours, it's five point four weeks, so five and a half weeks. And then the other two.
You got me confused on something, but I get what you're saying. You just add twelve days to whatever the.
I looked at it days and then I also looked at weeks just to condense that.
And it'll change for different parts based on the hour structure. That ain't about eats and claws, that's all.
So, well, ten in the normal part.
Ten in the normal part.
So for PTO on your first year, if you have that number, nine days is almost two weeks, so it's one point eight weeks. If you're at the second level of the ten, then it's a full three weeks of PTO. The next level is three point six or three and a half weeks and then the last level is a little over four weeks. That's paid time off. The additional that I added just for a perspective of total paid time off, when you add the holiday pay, it adds another two weeks and actually another day, so. Total, that's where these larger numbers came from. I was just. I was just curious how that came out in weeks, so it's, I mean, that's quite a bit of paid time off. Some of it's earned as you accrue through the year and some of it just get.
Which explains why I don't give a very much out of that. Cause if you got twenty one days and you got twenty two days, that's not easy. I can't, I don't even know what it takes. Have you taken that in the show? I wish I could.
What'd you say? Ten weeks? It depends on if you're actually working in your office and that's the age of time.
I don't, I don't know what happened to you. I don't know how I ever use five or six weeks. I mean, it was a bit rough.
Well, you do have to think about it. People have kids and if there's events that they wanna take home for.
Right.
But most have no take home near that kind of time.
We can take, we're not gonna take. A week off to give you something to take. So, yeah, we're.
So that's, that's just the numbers I did, the six, ten, twelve, fourteen.
Which is pretty close to the numbers I had. I had eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, so that one I changed was the first one, it's like. And look at, when we look at it as nine days and then discretionary, ten days, we're gonna. First year, boy, that's. That's two weeks paid vacation, that's pretty good.
So if one.
Based on the.
So that's, that was kind of my calculation. I don't know what other you guys have went on, but that's.
Next one, I'll pay for that.
How many do you do that as you hear all the numbers?
Yeah, I heard that we asked, we got this call, it's not reasonable.
I mean, that makes up all PTOs and nobody ever asks you to check with sick leave and then it says that they're off and there's your days. You got any about. As a part of our pool.
Well, that's, that's the old system itself.
So what was the other? All of it you were talking about?
The June.
June teams.
And I.
I was just looking it up.
I'm extremely uneducated.
It's federal, but it's not, the post office isn't gonna shut down. So it's observance, but it's not. Well, it says Congress passed it. I just checked that, cause I thought. Yes. But, and there was a few states that do.
I would rather go and opt out and nobody say this time.
Well, here's the, you probably show up.
Which five o'clock?
I kind of watch, I don't tend to like my watch works.
I don't, I can't watch, man. Whatever this is called right now is the one I don't like.
Right.
Maybe the one that's.
That's a dark address and you're getting off work, it's dark.
Okay, so that's what we need to decide on. That's the argument you want to use or if you guys wanna discuss other options.
Well, that's what we're talking about. I can live with that.
Yeah, I live with it, so.
Here's, awesome. So we have the year today, Mark Zuckerberg.
And well, the governor says something. June days. And I don't know even if it's the state, you just don't say anything. They can tell me you some. Well, right. Yeah, you can say. So here's a question on that. Instead of calling that a discretionary day, could you call it a holiday or what would you call it?
Discretionary was got started because it used to be you got off Good Friday. Was a holiday and then a lot of people say, well, that's not for me, so then they said, okay, you know what, if you're not.
So a worry draws discretionary is a good.
Yes.
Please don't make me.
Right.
I mean, it's currently ten and a half days because they close at eleven, eleven thirty first. And then there's Presidents', so it's currently ten and a half and then if you have discretionary, it's eleven and a half. So that's where I came up with that twelve, I guess. So if we're leaving on that, would you, would you have that been?
This will help the newer ones. Profusely to give, if a new one is looking at this, they're gonna see that they got two weeks, they say paid paid days.
But you're still gonna do it with six hours a month. You're not getting credit on that when they start or related to credit. You're getting credit as we go along.
Yeah, so the accrual will be just like, will be the six, ten, twelve, they'll still accrue that, so the PTO accrues. Holiday pay is just rather than set per day as it's. I was just trying to come up and just kind of see actually how much paid time off would they actually get for a year according to.
I think that's treating that a lot of, other than it can get in the product. Do you get that much time, Pat? Of course, I don't have any boys.
In most places, you have to work six months before you can take off.
So do we need to make a motion to change that, Pat? Then part six?
Motion, you just need to put it in the policy.
Once we, once we adopt.
Right, yes.
So do you have that pulled up?
I do, but I wanted to ask where do you want that to be?
So it's on page thirty three.
Take that all when you were just sick, that they were sick time.
So on the, it's page thirty three and then their divisions are, they have five, we have four, so we're gonna have to write that down. And I'm just gonna go by in the audit book where he lists employee benefits and I'm gonna go by the way he described it and then you tell me if that's. Mine's a third.
Yeah, we're good, okay. So we're going to put six hours in here.
Yeah, except. Yeah, okay. He has like zero one, so that says less than one year.
Okay, then we're gonna put one before, would you call, or would you call it two to ten? I'd say two to nine, actually.
Two to nine, that's not, okay.
Sorry, here, I can't. Two to nine years and that is only to me ten hours.
Cause that's correct. Nine days is correct and fifteen days is correct.
Okay, let's try that. So then do ten.
Oh, you're okay with showing you that one.
Okay, let's do that.
And I want more and more like. Five year old kids with. Well, yes, I understand that too, but these.
Go steady, that's up there.
So this is one was you reading that was?
I made sure they took a vacation every year and about five days. It was kind of. I avoid, you know, a lot of times.
So that should.
I got no desire to do a cruise.
Was it a baby?
No.
I think it doesn't calculate, let's just say seven days. And then sixteen plus two plus.
Yeah, you could have the ocean, most four is that.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Well, I know that. That's not.
And that is twenty one.
Problem is I gain weight.
Well, yeah.
Nine fifteen, eighteen twenty, nineteen twenty, sixteen and twelve hours. Um, so then we have a low four.
When we went to New Zealand. We took a boat to the South Island City North. And that's about six, eight hours. I enjoyed it. At the sea land.
The downwind holidays.
That was one. Like three seventy. They've looked at the victim and I. There's stuff looking at.
President's Day.
Right. There's, I don't know. Like that dish out there going long after.
Well, that you do. It's just that New Year's.
Although.
I wonder if we are good.
So these are last of all holidays and this is discretionary day and that holiday closing is.
Have they opened up?
So the people were particularly out as well, we need to review that in more study, but we may need to combine the definition of this to one. So you can actually take this. Because we're gonna call it PTO, so a lot of it's vacation.
So start with Scotland and then you take your train.
Vacation is the PTO.
And then the enforcement to the D day part of it.
All right, back to you guys. So we got the numbers in, so now we have to combine the definitions and the information about this into, we're getting rid of vacations simply and we're gonna call it PTO paid time off. So we've gotta go through these two pages and decide what part of this information needs to be in there for paid time off.
Does it also have the accumulated time?
Oh, we have to add it through sixty?
Yeah.
Thirty three and thirty.
And do you want to keep up there on page thirty three of the vacation time submitted to the following instructions? Do you want to implement all this?
That's what I just told them.
Okay, sorry.
That's it. We need to read page thirty three, thirty four, verse five.
I wouldn't call it vacation time, I'd call it PTO.
PTO, yeah.
And I change the top for said vacation to paid time off.
So I'm gonna read through this, but we have to determine how we wanna combine the definition of.
And I'm gonna change that vacation plan to PTO.
Right. So we just shorten this down to four, four.
Well, that's, that's what it was. We kept the breakdown that we had.
Okay.
And then, or not, they did. So, what are we doing? This says regular part-time employees, so they earned a pro rate. Are we gonna have any accrual from part-time employees?
We got accrual, same rate, not only an hour, but maybe maybe two or three.
Well, it says it's a pro rate, because they're not gonna earn the same amount because they're only.
Well, but I, I got this time, I'll give you accrual. Three time, maybe, when they get some time or not?
So, this says regular part-time employee earning PTO on a pro rate basis, so we have to set a number of hours they don't have to reach. Like, if they work.
What, is it twenty hours, that one of those? If you're working hard time to earn any kind of vacation time, maybe it's twenty hours.
Right.
Is it twenty-two, or under, I think it's thirty, I asked her, it was like thirty.
In the A of twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Twenty-four, so.
So if they work less than twenty-four, they don't earn any accrual.
Right.
So about twenty-four hours, I'm hearing that's a pro rate.
So then it says regular part-time employees working above, I guess we probably need to put that in there, working more than twenty-four hours.
Regular part-time employees. Working more than twenty-four. Well, maybe you wanna put working forty hours a week, because you don't wanna accrue that for some, because somebody that would work thirty-two would get, I mean, they get the lower part. Forty is where they get the full amount. So if they work under forty, they don't, they get the part-time rate. They work thirty-two hours a week, they would get the pro rate. So, I think forty is what we wanna say for regular full-time employees, working forty hours a week.
But do they not consider full-time thirty-seven?
Well, we would.
Thirty-seven hours is actually considered a full-time employee. I think that's how it is.
So then we would, you're saying we need to define the full benefits would be for somebody working full-time, and that we need to list what the part-time.
Right.
Amount that they would need to.
We could put as other regular part-time employees, working PTO on a pro rate basis, based on twenty-four and thirty-six hours.
Right.
Worked on. If it's less than that, there's nothing, if it's more than it is, that would be a full one.
Okay, so twenty-four, thirty-six.
So, regular part-time employees working twenty-four to thirty-six hours a week. Will earn a vacation.
Will earn a PTO, will earn a PTO, and on a pro rate basis.
And I would put up that the regular full-time employees are providing full-on vacation pay leave with, and you know those numbers, but I would let them, but thirty-seven hours is the. Is the full-time employee, I don't really wanna have anyone worry about. Do you wanna put hours in there, though, like that? I guess it makes it like a lot.
You do need to have a threshold that has to meet as a person.
Because we don't have a paid time off request form, or time off request form, maybe we can get one printed, but we don't have that. So, I mean, that's probably something.
What do they use that to say?
Just ask their department, their calendar.
Yeah, I think.
So probably a payroll trail, so it goes to end of the file. So is that what the question you got right there?
So you want us to.
I don't know, you tell me what it works for your mind, I think, for me, I would.
They put it in the system, just.
If somebody, if the department head's not here, if they're gone, nobody knows where they are, or if something happened, the federal court, she won't hear, who, who can do that, or help her? Is that how the person does that?
They can get into payroll. Yeah, I can use payroll.
I think.
But you would know all that if it was just on a calendar, told you. That's our time.
So if it's an department, when they request time off in the department, they do it within their department. We don't know if they're taking time off, we don't see the timesheet.
I think it's all in the system. I think the time off request is going to be per department, and that's how that department will manage to make sure that these people are taking time off. That it's looked at throughout the year, where you don't have everybody taking off at the exact same time, maybe around Christmas, and. Five people one off, but if that's all planned in advance, they're putting in their request, and then it can all be planned, and then it'll be spread out.
Okay, so you do want some kind of a form, do you want to do?
I think a time off request will be good for the department, and it's to be managing this time, because since it's not gonna be rolled over, and we use it or lose it. People are gonna, they, they, they'd be watching that, and they're not sure where they're taking it off at, where they're all taking it off at the same time at the end of the year, if they didn't realize they had that much coming up.
So that's, so we're, before we put this into effect, we're gonna have to get a form, right?
Right.
But I gotta say, that, that's managed by the department, it's not quite, they're not managing that for all the departments.
Okay, so, what I'm saying is, they did this thing, they come and say, where's the time off request forms? We don't have that.
The department head will be keeping on that.
Okay, all right, they can do a payroll.
Yeah, I don't know, we, we were talking about it, so whatever.
They can do that, so they don't look at it.
They just need to have, they need that form, and they have a file, and as they, the question comes in, they can schedule those on the calendar, and have it filed, and if you read that, they've got it. But I don't think you should have to manage that.
No.
I was envisioning.
Okay, well, my question was that we don't have a form.
Yeah, pretty.
And I'm not gonna, I mean, like, in our office, I don't know, to me, what we do works, so.
Right.
I mean, am I gonna be asked later to provide the commissioners with my file of time off request forms?
I'm not asking.
I'd say this is just to help the departments, be able, the department heads to manage the requests coming in, so that people don't all take off at the same time. When, at the end of the year, a bunch of people have extra time, and then you take, not everyone can take off at the exact same time, so these requests are just gonna have to manage when people are taking off. But those would say.
Okay, but what I'm asking though is, at some point, you need to say, Rhonda, I want to see your time off request forms, and if I have done them like I've always done it, am I gonna be in any trouble? I mean, that's a question.
I don't care, I don't.
I don't see that, that's not how I envision this.
Okay, we're, all right, well, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, I mean, I'm trying to intervene, the rules are both directions here.
So your question on the accrual amount is kind of in here. Upon termination of employment, they're entitled to pay for unused accrued vacation not to exceed the maximum accrual for the years of service above. They've actually broken it down by these zero to one.
That's because that's the max you can accrue, so.
So somewhere, we just have to list that it's three sixty.
Right, it, well, you'll do it just like that outside of each one of those.
Correct.
Just take it, and that's the max.
So where do you want the three sixty? This is what they can accrue for, for year?
No, that's the total amount accrued ever. You can never go above that. If you're above the hundred and sixty hours, and haven't used it, like, you're gonna lose it.
Right, this chart just says what they have the ability to earn that year, so.
That's the maximum accrual. That means that's all you can carry. You can't carry anymore.
Once you hit three sixty.
If you're at three sixty right now, and you've earned twenty days this year, and you don't use the twenty days, you're gonna lose this.
But we have to list that three sixty is the total for everybody.
It's in there right there, three sixty, whatever that number is, it'll be the total.
Right.
And this just too short, but in our old book. It just needs to show the maximum, it's gonna be the three sixty with no carryout. And three sixty ends.
Right, and I think that's where this line would just go in there, right there.
Yeah, that's.
So, um, this line, I think.
It's not for you, it's, that's the amount that you can never go for.
Yeah, for these people, this is what they can earn for a year, but three sixty is the max they can get accumulated, they can't roll anything above that.
Right, the year, the year, I don't care if they're pros for a year, because it's the total.
So here it says upon termination of employment, an employee entitled to pay for unused accrued vacation leave not to exceed three sixty. For years of service.
But sometimes it's not, I mean, they can't get three sixty at that time, so.
Right.
I mean, it'd take them in their fourth year, if they never took a day off, to get to three sixty.
Right.
We cross this part off. I don't know.
Yeah, some of that doesn't matter anymore, but anything that has to do with sick and all that, it's just on. I think now that the numbers are in place, I think you can probably figure out the order to do that.
Well, I can, but I'm a person, it's free. I mean, it's like, I mean, it's like something that you don't.
We're not gonna load on this, we're gonna get the book, so we can get a little print, so we can do that book.
Right.
So I don't think I want to sit here and just start reading the pages, but you, I would, I would turn this responsibility over to you now that we know the numbers.
I'll stick your.
You're wrong to configure this.
Right.
I mean, I'll go through the book with all of our edits.
Absolutely.
And I'll stick with.
Yeah, yeah, they printed out, copied it, maybe, I don't know if you have it in mind, maybe, I don't know if we can.
I don't think so.
I don't think it'll take us long.
No, it doesn't.
Okay, so if we can get a printed book, money, we can look at all the money, make, if there's any changes, we can make them know, and have this out for them, or is it quicker?
Right.
I mean, I'll stay.
But I'll, I'll take that, I mean, I have no problem putting it in the chart, like. It's better to sit here and just kind of look at each other, wondering what we're doing.
But I'm a person.
That's fine, I'm, I'm good with that, it's okay. I mean, again, it's not, it's not like we're, there's gonna be a lot of things that would be rude.
If you're fine with that, I'll stay.
Okay.
And go through that, if you're on it.
Okay.
Because my book has a lot of the notes that.
Well, you may have some other things you want to talk about, so you don't talk about it this day.
Yes, well, I'd like to give you an overview, so we can have a timeline to finish these things. But I talked with Scott yesterday again, I went over the twenty twenty-two approved for budget. So, when it comes to the specifics of the line items for each of the departments, which is the personnel, commodities, and contractual services. He plugged in some generic numbers that he's plugged in in previous years, nothing was ever refined. He said what he remembers is that we were going to be meeting with some departments and refining that. So we still have to do that. My thought and his thought on that, that would be fairly easy, was each of the departments, which could come from Melinda, as you look at the base. Personnel needed, and then that gets plugged in to their personnel. And actually, Devin gave us this the other day.
I'll say Devin just printed it off.
And I will tell you, where he started these, I had a question, I think he might have added. These might not quite be accurate, but these can all be checked.
Right.
So these, this would be the base that gets plugged in then, Scott did not do that. Then with the commodities and the contractual services. You could, and he said that the departments really should do this. We could also do it too, and then compare it with them, but basically, you would take nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, the last three years. And each of the departments could look at, like, for us, as an example. We would look at what was spent year-to-date for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one of each of these line items, and see if what they spent this year was about the same, and if it is, that gives you a good. Average that we can plug in for the budget for twenty twenty-two. When I looked at what Scott had put in for twenty twenty-two, and I was comparing it back to what had been spent. Currently, this year and one previous year, some of the stuff is way off, like, some stuff is, the budgets are way bigger than what they use, and in some of them, they're a lot less than what they use.
Which is not gonna refer to somebody's budget, because if you're starting off in the hole.
Correct.
Right.
So as we talked yesterday, and he said, since you guys are changing how you're managing that budget by line item. Because I had told him, I said, it's a disservice to people that if we're not getting these somewhat close to what they're needing, they're gonna be in the hole pretty quick in the first few months. So he said, yes, you need to, you need to get a good average. He did say, in CIC, there's a worksheet that will do a five-year history. So, I don't know that something.
Wonder if they come in?
He doesn't have, he's not scheduled. CIC is not coming till January, and that's a completely different issue. But he said, there is a worksheet in CIC, it does a five-year, um, history, and that's what some counties use when they're working on their budgets. They print out these worksheets, and they fill in the numbers, and it gives them what they need. So, I don't think that's something Rhonda can get, but.
I mean, you know what it's, you know what it's called? Not right off, it's in the budget section.
Okay, he said that would be very awful, but he recommended that each department. Come up with those specific numbers, and then we can compare what we come up with to where we come up with the final number. He also recommended on the personnel, because overtime is something that is not budgeted in there. He said on the line items, like, in here. He recommended under the personnel services, you have one more line that says, um, like, overtime personnel, and that way. It, it can really be looked at on a monthly basis, per department. But there's no budget for that, obviously, so, but he said.
But that'll show you why you're wrong, that's what happens.
Right.
Well, he said it'll be helpful to, as we're trying to really work on that, it will be helpful to have it divided out in that way. Instead of just having it on the map of, like, this sheet. Or, like, we'll do this overtime, or, it does print it out, but he recommended that. In the general fund, there are a few departments that need the reimbursement line added. We talked about that with him, so we, and that would be something that C, CIC or. CIC has the capability to add the line, but someone's gonna have to put that in there. But that would be. Like, the sheriff needs a reimbursement line. The county treasurer needs a reimbursement line. Uh, general transportation needs a reimbursement line. So anything in the general fund that we're getting reimbursed for, when we had business with him, he was recommending a line, and it will show up. Like, let's say it was the treasurer, you're gonna have a reimbursement line. So, um, like with the sheriff's department, when he has.
So.
Yes. So, we need to decide of the general ones.
Then the sheriff's office on reimbursement for.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so, I don't think the county, we don't have reimburseals, county court, I don't think it's one, the county treasurer does.
Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, you write that down.
What's that?
What we're saying.
Sheriff.
So we have treasurer.
Red bridge.
Sheriff. Does the jail have reimbursements?
Yeah, the officer.
Well, yeah, I suppose you could put the commissary in there.
Sanitation.
Council on Aging, no.
General Taxation.
General Transportation.
Noxious weed, they would have, anything that's had money come in, so they have it there.
Right.
See, that noxious weed, yeah. Maybe about everybody. County attorney.
Well, there's a difference. There are, there are county fees that get collected for certain purposes, that does not need to be in there, these are only reimbursements.
But I'm telling you, you get noxious weed, sell parts, or sell.
In a false.
General taxation's gonna have, sanitation's gonna plug money for trash. County attorney's gonna plug different fees or whatever.
But those. Well, I will tell you.
A lot of hairs, no. Because here's where we have a problem. When they do the seizures on properties, it's gotta go through the county attorney and the sheriff's department, correct?
Or if you're.
And then they both get part of that money. So that's gonna be a reimbursement of some sort. Now, that may not be used for certain things, but
Right.
it still might exist.
Yes, if it's a true reimbursement.
It's not, that's not.
That, that wouldn't be.
I don't know what you're talking about.
No.
Money coming into your pocket.
Yeah.
No, it's reimbursement if you like.
Right.
I mean, you don't try to say it's about reimbursement. Sanitation's not a reimbursement. It's an income.
But there's already a lot of it into that. So we don't, we don't wanna mix that. See where it says, like, county officer fees? A lot of the things that.
So instead of doing that by, or by, we'll need to create a fund that is revenue that comes to the county from selling equipment.
Right.
And put that into the general fund. Kind of make it somewhat simpler now in their budget. We can go, look at that. We're already, I don't think you want to try to make them keep track of that.
The reimbursements are completely different than what you're talking about. So what Scott had said was there will be, I think, I think there, he said there were five departments.
So what's a reimbursement?
Uh, like the general transportation, we have that grant, and so we pay out our expenses, she turns that information in, and we get reimbursed for those expenses.
So how do we do that now?
It just goes into general, huh?
So you wanna break all of these off and not have it in the general fund?
I don't think Scott was talking about all of them.
No, it was like, they were just like.
What I was saying is it was just like several things saying, like, sheriff.
The sheriffs I know, it is. That's when the cell of the county.
Well, and more like, um, the sheriff's office.
Yes.
And when they do the, they get it by the cities, that would be one that definitely.
I think it was the five. So it was the treasurer, office, sheriff. Right? G P T.
Probably the health department, because they get a lot of grants.
Well, the health's not in the general, though.
No, it's not.
So he said, if it's not in the general, they're, they have the ability to show receipts. He said it's only the ones in the general.
So if it's those five, the road, the sanitation, five of them.
Right, right, general, right. He's not general, so that is okay.
Neither's, um.
Sanitation's not either.
Yes.
So the jail would be the other one. How do you want?
Yeah.
Even though it's under the sheriff's.
Well, it's, it's its own department, the general one.
You have to talk to them and figure out what ones need to be in there.
I think it was just those five. But that was his recommendation on that. So you can find the five-year worksheet.
Yeah, I'll try to make that for you.
And find out how we have the reimbursement line. And then how we have the overtime personnel line.
Um, the reimbursement line, I think it has to be from the treasurer. Um, but I will double check and make sure, I've made, I'll look back at my notes for that. Um, and then what's it, they can print the fiber budget reimbursement.
Yeah, there's the five-years worksheet.
Right, about that.
Then there's the reimbursement line.
Gotcha.
And then there is the overtime personnel line that's gonna go underneath the regular personnel.
So we're gonna split paychecks between two different lines. The overtime will have like a one one.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, let me back up.
No, I'll double check.
I don't know what's gonna happen on your end, so I cannot answer that. All I know is the way it's reported on here is he was recommending, even if it's overtime, that it needs to show up on that line.
Okay. Maybe a little bit clearer.
So that may be something to talk to Scott about, and then ask C I C. So I can't answer what you just asked me.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how to work these, of the software parameters. So once we uh, refine those expenditures, Scott said to give him that information, he can plug that into the twenty twenty. And then this is what he said will happen. Right here, this is the twenty twenty proposed budget. Right here is this cash forward from twenty twenty-two. So as we adjust and make things tighter, if there is money taken out of this, it'll just get added to that. So this number stays the same because that's what we approved. So he said, we have the ability to adjust all those. And then even, I think, through the year, let's say we had a department that we allotted for two employees, but then halfway through the year, we added a position. You can adjust because it's probably gonna. It, this number stays the same, but we can adjust through that.
Right.
Is what, the way I did it.
And so we'll be changing it. Like I said, there's a blank copy of it.
Yeah, so that was what he recommended on this. The last thing he kind of recommended that maybe we wanna look at is, he said, because of the way we're gonna be managing different, the size of our county, the number of employees, and the size of the budget. So some counties go to where they kind of have a financial manager or someone who kind of works. He said, this is, this is more work than a commission would have time to do when you're managing it tighter like this. He said, so just, that's just an idea that he kind of threw out, which that might be something we wanna look at, is having someone who oversees the budgets, works with the departments, that's what it is. So I just thought I'd throw that out, and we might want to, um, have a discussion into next year about if we want, what we think about that.
About what? I guess I'm trying to figure out what kind of person to turn on. You're talking about the county administrator?
Well.
Because I don't think the people with the county are gonna go for a county administrator. We probably.
No. Uh, he, he kind of mentioned, and as I've kind of read a little bit, he mentioned like an H R manager a lot of times. And when, when I started looking things up, an H R manager a lot of times has budgetary duties to where they're kind of overseeing. So I don't see it as a county administrator. I see it more fitting in with maybe like an H R type thing, where that's, those duties are combined into one thing.
So if we're gonna give them numbers that are gonna be correct, because he's gonna want those pretty quick.
Yes.
And we're doing this for next year.
Yes.
Then we really shouldn't have talked about raises for next year, because we want to have those numbers close. So if we're gonna do raises, we need to have those ready to go into that, so that's not incorrect.
He asked me about that, and I wasn't sure how to answer. He said there was the two options. If you're giving a raise where it's an actual rate for their hourly rate, that's one thing. That's every year. Or, he also said that he had been working on something where there was just a kind of like a flat rate, like a bonus payment or something.
Right.
I didn't, I wasn't following that purpose.
Right, here's the problem with it. I hate those things, and here's one.
Yes.
It is the most unfair thing in the area of the county. Might look good for the county, but it's not for the employer. Here's one. The city of Osage, the city of Lundy. We're competing with those people for employees, and we're gonna lose our employees if we don't get our pay in mind. And what happens is if you give them a bonus, it's there than it's not. You put it on check, you give it some taxes, here's the law. You put on a raise, it stays there, and it builds up their opportunity. Now, you cap them at some point in time, but this is what the position's gonna pay. This is starting to pay, and when it gets to this rate, it's not gonna change anymore. But it's never happened that way. And we're so far behind right now in pay that if we don't do something, we're not gonna have anybody. And that's what will be on the fix. And I'm telling you right now, a bonus is not gonna fix that.
I'm not saying I recommend it. I'm telling you that he brought that up yesterday.
And I, maybe that's where.
Some questions, and I said, I don't, I'm not privy to that conversation.
Maybe that's where that come from, but I'm telling you right now, I would never, ever, one hundred percent, or I would not support a bonus system at all. I think it should be done.
The only reason it was done to catch was because it's a tax law. And.
I, I just don't think it ever works.
Well, I agree with you.
County needs to pay the help that they want. If the help's not worth keeping, then don't pay it, get rid of them. But if they're worth keeping, then pay them to cover. That's my philosophy. I mean, I, you don't, people are not gonna stand.
We have a couple of them scheduled right now. That's the biggest problem.
I agree. So I mean, we can figure that out, but I mean, we can, we can get to, I don't know, I don't like just saying, well, everybody raises this amount because.
Right.
Not everybody's the same. I think we put it in there, we'd like to look at raises from this much to this much, and then sit down with employees, sit down with departments, and figure out who gets what. I think that's where you make that work. I don't think you.
Are, do you want to do all that before twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, I do. I don't care how it goes, but I don't, I don't think we wanna make these guys wait another year for raises now.
I will tell you.
I think we need to do something.
And I'm just throwing this out as just an idea. I haven't even gotten any details, but I was asking, meaning for the East Area Agency, and it was voted there that they gave like a cost of living, like a certain percentage cost of living rate, so. That may be even another.
That's what most of them do.
Right, yeah.
It was a little more of a cost of living. I think it was something, it's not that.
Well, in Iowa, they, they, they get three percent.
Oh, yeah.
They get the three percent cost of, so.
But what I'm saying is, is never, for, I can't, I went back through some years and wronged you around a couple of this. When's the last time there was an actual raise given to, some employees got, because the, some departments got it, some didn't, but that was because of whatever.
I think it's been four years, because there was, last year was, there, I don't think there was anything. This current year, there isn't. No, there was anything. Um, in twenty, there was a, in twenty, I think there were three years of bonuses, I think it's been four years.
It was like two thousand and ten was the last where you recall the way true. It's been quite a while. Across the board and, or adjusted.
And there was.
Positions for duties or whatever.
There's been anything from twelve and a half cents an hour to, you know, maybe a quarter an hour, an hour. I mean, it's been all the way up until now.
Again, I, I, I've looked at these numbers, and I'm certain they're just shaking my head a lot. I get it, you guys are pretty good at math, I guess, but unfortunately, if I were to pack and tell the whole papers on them, I would get them packed. I get that, but they still need to have, they still need to get their numbers down. And the ones that are real bad, I mean, I'll just say it, it's the ones here in courthouse. And it's not, that's the, that's the ones them or others, those are the ones that are not. Fortunately, we figured, they fixed the sheriff's department before we came in, they gave them a free copy of this. So it's, things have been done, but we need to probably look at taking care of the other departments that are not being taken care of. So that would be a discussion I would like to have, and liking it, but then so we get on to the budget and moving forward with that. So how do you wanna start that? Let's pay it all fifty thousand. Can we start out, everyone, forty thousand here?
With everything I've been working on, this has been, I mean, this is the, I, it seems like to me it's a, it's a big, it's a big item.
Well, I went.
I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I, I have not thought.
I got the stuff from Scott on it. We just did. And I may not have. Yes. If we did just employees that are in the courthouse that have not been affected or were not a part of the raise program that we do already, is that correct, Ron? Is that number fifty-two employees?
Yes.
It would cost the county, if we did a one dollar an hour raise, it would cost the county under ten thousand bucks a year.
True.
Yes, true. That's fifty-two employees, a dollar an hour. And that would get our rate, that would get our pay rate up a little bit closer to where, it's not, still not great, but it's not as bad as it is right now.
I will say, I really do think we need to, what you just mentioned was, and I forwarded the Franklin County document to them that have, I don't know what it's called, but it has every position, has it kind of, uh, broken down by levels, and then it has to start in that opposition.
Exactly. Hey, again, that's part of, because once you start doing raises, you get, and then while you talk accounting is a great example, because we got employees. We're blessed that we have employees throughout the county. The problem with that is if you keep doing raises, word isn't in, I mean, you can all of a sudden get thirty bucks an hour, and that, maybe that's not feasible. So I, there has to be a cap, and it has to start with the word. And everybody knows that one, yeah.
Right.
That's the thing. There needs to be a base schedule set up. You know, I'm saying this right now, we know the base schedule is not good, and we're continually reducing employees, and we're continually looking for other dollars because of it. So if we do an immediate fix made that helps us for now, then we can start looking for it. And start looking on that schedule.
You know, it's either consultant or a pay schedule. Yes. Based to the prevailing. Is that right?
We need to get.
And we need to get them all.
You mean a consultant to do a study.
Study, you know, comparable wages in, in the area. Right, yes.
Which Devin has done some of that for me.
Right.
So what department?
Well, we would be looking at, uh, you'd look at the clerk's office, you'd look at the treasurer's office, you'd look at the register deeds. No, 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 county attorney, I'm sure they're already doing this. No, 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 all out of trouble. Counselor agent, if we got anything there.
I don't, I don't include it.
So they're in general transportation.
If we said right off. Because they.
They have our change. I think you're sorry, so after it's been there here. And the raises would be in there.
Was it no one recruited?
No, there's nothing in there. There are no one recruited in this one. And I think that's where we come up with that number of employees.
Um, it's lasting, not just these.
Yes, it is. But it would help, I think, if we made that decision, and we could put that under there now, and let everybody know what's going to be. And then with that, we start getting, we start getting the pay scales, we'll put it in place, and we'll have it. During, sometime during next year, we'll have it out there.
So if you did this, would it make, because I know what things, would it make, if you did these positions outside and wanted to scale, it would probably be? And you're looking at a delta of thirty cents.
Yeah, I think we do this. I don't think we'll be all, I mean, this one's a fix. I think the bottom one is the ones that we fix out.
Well, what if we did half of that? And then did that study next year?
Because I think we're, I think we're so far off when you look at this. I mean, we're, we're gonna lose employees that I'll fix this week. And the thing is, we fix it, we attract more employees. That's the plus side of that. Then we ought to, if you're paying people what they're working, I'll put this up, and I'll, I'll work this, so Patty, you tell me if I'm reading this wrong. But if you're paying people what they're working, then you can ban all of them. And if you, and if you do that, and they don't work for them, then you've got a good reason why they're not here. And that's the other one. This overtime will have to stop. You have, that's why you pay attention to what we're doing, and if they're, and if they're getting overtime and tearing it up, then you're gonna, you'll fix that, because we can fix the wages anytime. If they're using overtime, increase their wages just back down.
Well, that's not really what I meant. One of the waste costs, because we have, where, where's the extra spending?
Yeah, it's gonna, we're gonna have the money to go on this overtime.
If overtime, overtime is three times as much as what that would go up. So if we can adjust this, if you get people getting overtime, they get a raise and they get overtime, then this number goes up a lot.
The boys we're talking about there are not receiving overtime unless it's an emergency or open year, and that you can't.
You got that.
So I mean, there's no way.
Or else there's a flood.
So I, I have no problem, and I would make that motion that we do that effectively. Because you're gonna need some time to put it in the federal system. I would make that motion that we do that after ten or third.
We need to double check this.
I'm getting there to go over that one. Well, the number of employees, she's saying like.
They're gonna have, they're gonna waste what they're, they just spell it out.
And it'll be in the.
Just to double. Just to double check all of it. Maybe because I'm not, I mean, I just, I have this type of possession. I've not worked on it, so.
But I'm going to make the motion, I regard, here with her, so, I mean, I've studied it so much that I've worked people ahead of that.
Well, I'm definitely, we could.
And I've looked around at what other places are paying and I'm telling you right now, if we don't fix it, we're not going to have any force. And I'm not taking that chance anymore. I think we need to fix it ASAP. Because if we don't, we're not going to get it. It wasn't really, you know, point or we're accepting ourselves and I'm not, I don't think we have.
I'm just asking if I, I have not taken time to look all through this. I'm just asking if we do that Monday.
Sure, I don't care.
I'm not just.
If you want to, okay, that's all you want. I mean, if there's anything, I will talk to her. She knows what she's part of, so talk about it. So certainly make a number of fifty-two. But I think I've touched on all of them. The ones that have received the raises already, we won't ask.
Yeah, because I just.
And any, and any employee that has not been there a year, their raise would not go into effective till it was their one year.
Right.
So that would be like a one year anniversary.
Right, just say that.
Okay. So an employee that has not been employed for one year would not receive the raises until their one year anniversary. Actually, you're going to move them, I don't know, move them, that's other, because I think they want to raise the base pay up to attract new employees. So, no, I think we'll do the rest.
Yeah.
Okay, and the, I meant.
But there's some of these that have a, a automatic raise at one year, right?
Right.
Yes.
So we'll waive all that. We'll waive all the way to the raises.
You're not going to, you're, so you're going to do away with the six month, one year, whatever. You're just going to.
Just for this quick time.
Right.
Because we're going to, or they're going to get paid right now.
Right.
So we're going to take care of that all at once. And then we're going to raise the base pay up to attract new employees. That would be, that, we're saying this out loud because she's going to get a chance to look over, but.
Right.
That will be the idea behind it.
Right.
So one of the things in the work policy, can I bounce back one way? Because, I mean, I, I understand you said Heather's made a big decision, so. But bereavement, in this one, it's very different than what we had. Um, this one from that we've been working with says three days per calendar year, um, in the death of a median family. Okay. I hate to play devil's advocate here, but my life hasn't been rosy the last eight, two months. So I'm just saying that what if somebody loses their mother in July and their father in December? I mean, you know, are you going to look at that person to three days? In our old policy, it's per occurrence. You only have one mother, father, husband.
Right.
I mean, lots of people have multiple sisters and brothers, but you know, what I'm saying is, it's not like somebody didn't really abuse it, but that, uh, it's your decision, but I'm just saying that is what they have.
I think according to.
Per occurrence, yes.
Make sure he is.
And he just says they've got ten deaths in a year, that's going to trigger a giant.
I went to a guy one time and his mom died four years.
Well, the, the clarified part is that if the median, I mean, they, they're, I mean, they just say somebody who's there.
December or not, you know. So, yeah, we would probably need to, when we get that part, what would it be definition of what it has? Yeah, I, but I just wanted to kind of, because that's something that's definitely different.
Okay. So we'll talk about that again on. No, give me a chance to go on.
Oh, I just said there were a couple of things.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, I did go over the audit. I just said, I read it out of a bunch of questions. So in regards to some of the, uh, the violations that were here. I talked to a bunch, I talked to three different people. I called Jay Hall, who's the legal, um, representative of KAC. And just said, I'm a new commissioner. First went through his budget or through the audit. There's some violations. You know, what, what's our legal, you know, what, what should we be doing with this? He recommended having our counsel look at it. I sent Pat an email and just asked if he had the copies. He said he did. As I kind of read through some of the items, a lot of the corrections that are recommended are about policy and internal control. So I don't know if the departments have the policies or internal controls already written or not. So, um, like Scott and I asked if he would do this and he said it was fine. Like if he came back, we would go through the audit. We would look at his recommendations, but we would bring in whoever the departments are that are involved in those particular items. And then we'll work through what is the solution he's recommending? How do we get that done? If a lot of it is the policies and internal control, we can look if we are to have something. If we don't, we have to find someone to write those. And I asked Pat about that and you, what was your answer?
I think you need some as governmental accounting and auditing experience, because that's how they write the rates. And that'd be business implied on the auditing. So they got to know that current inside now.
So that was his, uh, kind of recommendation and he agreed that he would come back and then us together would just work with each department on his recommendations and come up with a solution to work.
And he may already have all of that, because he talked about that.
So that is something Jay Hall had said. He said the person who does your audit, that person may already have those documents or a good referral source to help you do those things. So I'm thinking that's a project for January, like starting on January then.
Yep.
And, uh, just knock them out, just like set the day, have them in, have all the department heads come in and we just work for that.
And that's something that we can do that any day of the week because it doesn't take.
Yeah, it may not have to be a normal meeting day or not, that.
We're not going to call employees out, so we're going to have, it's not even an open meeting.
Well, we're all for here, it has to give you.
But I'm trying to, we'll call through this one after here, one person in here. And they're not a person that would change. I mean, not elected people, we're not going to, we're not going to talk about that, anything. Elected officials, you can talk about them, but, um, not elected, so I don't think you can do that. That's what I mean by that. If you're talking about any kind of policies and stuff, you've got to pretty much do that. Elected people, it's why, we can talk about anything you want, but if it's not elected, you've got to be very careful.
Right.
Well, and from what I've read in the audit, this is.
And you're talking about setting anything that change, I mean, you just got to be careful. Nobody's identifying. And if you're going over stuff like you're talking about, you're going to start up.
This does not have names in it. It just says, here was the violation, here's the recommendation. So you're just bringing people in, in that department, and then we're going to work through that. So we're not.
Unless, unless you're completely naive, I can figure out who you're talking about just listening to the conversation. So if I'm a non-elected personnel accountant and you're going out and bust an open meeting, we're going to, if I'm elected official, that's part of the, that's part of your, of your job. A non-elected person, they have those rights and that doesn't happen. That's why I'm saying we got to be very careful. I do not want to talk about any non-elected positions, departments in an open meeting that is not, that's unnecessary. I mean, that type of stuff we're talking about there needs to be held at private setting, away from public meeting. Unless it's a public official, an elected public official, then that changes.
Well, to backtrack a little bit, my focus here is not to throw them back.
But I'm saying, if you're starting talking about, people are going to defend themselves because they're not, nobody wants to end up in any, in a guy's act of the wrong. So I'm just telling you that you got, it's going to be walking in an area that we might be somewhere.
So then what, what would that look like?
What would that?
So if we had.
It would be like an employee meeting with their boss, which we would have, we would assign one commissioner, the human rights, uh, the human rights. The human resources. Well, we would have that team together to sit down with them and get their foot stopped. On the non-elected side, I mean, elected side, I can hear us because they're, we're all above them. They can say, well, we're not against your rights. It's the people that are not elected that you can't do that.
So if we had it in one day, then.
It's still working.
So, so if we, so if it's the elected offices, that would just be, it would be the three of us, Scott and them who work on stuff. If it's the non-elected, then two people would need to leave.
My point is this.
And then we would bring those in privately and do the same thing.
Right. My point is, is that it's what you just said, public. The elected officials, we're one hundred percent public. There's nothing, there's nothing private yet. But like the appraisers office, the, uh, one other department we have that are going to be following that, the courts, Roman Bridge. Any of those departments are not going to be, are not going to be elected officials. So, i.e. the last appraiser we had to have, that they gave her the same rights as an elected official, we're probably giving her the same rights of that. They may have elected official wants to, but no commissioners could have treated her like an elected official. They just have not.
Okay, so on the appointment day, we can combine, we can combine those two groups. It's just we'll do part of it one way and then the, the non-elected will do the other.
Exactly.
So he could come.
I mean, it's all in how we, I mean, I don't think you want to call anybody out. I think you just want to have it and say, listen, how do we fix this and make sure we know what we're trying to fix, what we agree? Because at this point in time, I get what you're saying, but when he went through the book, a lot of that stuff that was in that habit, a lot of that stuff's already been taken care of, but it's still in there because he wanted us to see it. So I don't know what is and what isn't fixed. I don't want to go and beat up something that's been, that he put in there because it happened in the past, but it's still taken care of. I don't, I don't want to sit there and talk about it.
Yeah, so things that aren't resolved.
Exactly. Things that aren't resolved and have what they're technically going for. And that's what, again, the elected people, that's fine to do it right here in an open meeting, but non-elected people, I think we got to be very careful.
So we can do one of them from in the open and then the other set just. So what timeframe in January do you want me to, because I told him I'd get back with him and kind of.
I would ask him what his schedule's like. I'm good with anything in January.
Okay.
We got one day of the old appointments. What's that?
Uh, um, I don't know. January, how do you, the tenth?
I got one of the, January tenth?
Yes.
Yep, so we're not going to be the tenth, so we don't.
In January tenth is the meeting with CIC. We're working on the alphabetizing thing and then Pat had asked about, he had a, a request of something for us to.
Putting the names on the last name.
Well, now sharing addresses.
Addresses between departments, home members.
Right. The, uh, the, I, maybe we should wait until we decide on a template, kind of, because when we talked about changing the meeting date. That's the day we'll do that.
Right.
So I'll tell him, since it's in January, we're probably towards the end and just see what his schedule is.
Yeah.
Do you want us to be on a meeting day or should we just get on a completely different day? I guess I'll ask him how long he thinks we would need this like for. Like this is like.
I mean, if we want, we could do the fourteenth of January, we know we're going to be a pair. So we'd be probably, I need the fourteenth of January.
Yeah.
I'll ask him that, how much might he think?
That's a problem. After that, I mean, it's going to be. I don't, again, like I said, we're talking about changing that meeting date, so. I'm doing that. I'd hate to tell him that we have, um, I'm not here.
Yeah.
It'd be fun to have a show. Zoom meeting.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Speaking of Zoom, I, we are going to do Zoom for the CIC meeting on the tenth. But I did talk with Sonny. I think it would be good if we could just have Zoom capabilities all the time for multiple reasons. One is, let's say you have somebody that we have on the agenda, but maybe they're from a long ways away. Sometimes you drive here, they can do a Zoom.
I would.
There could be times that maybe we don't feel the best and maybe we shouldn't be around people, but we don't feel bad enough to not be able to be in a meeting. Be at home, do a Zoom, but still be in the meeting. Um.
No way. It's about enough time in here. Of course, I don't want your phone to hang.
I think there are multiple purposes. A lot of counties do it. The other thing that some counties do is they have a Zoom meeting ID for every meeting and it put, it gets put out with the agenda and anyone who wants to maybe do public comment, but they're not going to drive all the way here because maybe they aren't at work. They can be available on Zoom. So if you're okay with that, I want to know what your thoughts are. I told Sonny that maybe sometime in January I'd have him come. He could tell us what it would take to do that.
That's one of the reasons we would put that TV on there, so we can have, where they can put a display up there.
Yes. So there's a little, there's a few more technical things that'll go along with it. But he, he could come and tell us what it would take and then just kind of what the financial would be. It's not going to be that expensive to have it. And if you're okay with that, I'll just.
If we're smart, we'll work it into the sound system that Jack is gracious and say he'll take care of, out of the, uh, out of the, uh, diversion funds, which they would be able to utilize that if they had Zoom in there for their.
Right.
Additional courtroom or whatever duties they needed. It's always a lot of questioning. I mean, that's what people may realize. This room is not just for the commissioner.
Very multi-purpose.
Everybody in this courthouse, if they have a need for it, to use it.
So back to the Zoom, then both of you, I'm delegating, that can figure it out in the audio portion, who would be doing that?
I actually have a lot of people, that company that we talked to.
Yeah.
Yes, and they have done several commissioners and I have not got a hold of them, but I'm trying to. So if you got that card.
Um, I can have it upstairs. So if you have Zoom up here or whatever, and then we're still doing you.
The camera will change when they do this, the other day. Yeah, this whole thing will change.
Me. Okay, well, well, here's my thing. I mean, I just, I'm concerned about if we have Zoom and that has to stop for executive and that has to, I mean, I'm just, the more things you add on.
Yeah, we'll do that. We're not going to go, so we're going to have to do it in a different way.
Okay. Just that those questions are what Sonny would come in here and explain to us, because I asked him the same thing. He said, actually, that would be the same. But like this, for Zoom, we would probably have a different computer over here and that would be running the Zoom side. But he would explain to us how.
You would, you really need a separate Zoom coordinator.
What I'm talking about though is that it will, when they put a sound system in here, that won't be here anymore. It'll change this thing.
Right.
So that may be able to be utilized in other areas, but if they put in a system up here, we won't have that go, it will, it'll be a professional system and it'll be done. And I'm not saying that's not professional, I'm just saying it'll be set up a whole.
Right.
And it'll be, or we don't have to run around that.
So the audio person and Sonny will need to be coordinating for us to have both of those features, whether the meeting's running live and the Zoom and how they want to do it with all the.
I would say that you're going to have a commissioner that's probably going to be in that chair where we're sitting, that you'll be there for the next three years anyway. You'll have to learn how to run that computer that picks up the Zoom and.
You're able to.
Well, it doesn't have to. It can be right over there. And you can handle Zoom.
I've been on a lot of Zoom meetings and you really need someone, and that's their job, is just coordinate. And when you flip all the speakers.
I'm not a computer desk.
Right, but you need one, and that's all their job is to do that. Because they have problems getting.
I can get on, I can talk.
Yes.
But I don't want to, it's all getting in there to get everything set up.
So that would be what Sonny can educate us on.
It's, it's not a real hard job, but you need one person just doing that.
Thank you, my goodness, you made it fix the computer. So now Sonny's got it upstairs. So he's got to do his thing, hopefully get you guys. He said he's going to try and get it Friday.
Okay.
So, because they corrected it, so he's got to reinstall everything.
Okay.
Okay.
He's on the law, take over.
I'm just getting started. Because I'm going to be sitting here for the.
Every time for executive, for term five.
How long is it? Fifteen? Uh, we make a motion, we go into Attorney Pott, Executive Session for fifteen minutes, starting at ten twenty, I'll say, going up ten thirty-five with the county council president to, to discuss matters involving, uh, Attorney Pott, President. Second. All of us in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same time? Motion, prayers?
And I'm sorry, Jay, could you say twenty minutes or fifteen?
Fifteen.
Okay.
That's why I asked, just a check that you haven't heard about.
No, ten thirty-five or three seven? Yeah, okay, I heard a call. Sorry, I was trying to tie.
Yeah.
One minute? Fifteen, fifteen, same way, same motion, okay. One minute?
All right, so no action taken, you have any? You look at that yet? So I'll make a motion then, you want to look down first? These are vehicles anyway, these are. I'm gonna make a motion for the change orders to ask.
Second.
I'm listening very sorry.
Aye.
Any other ones? Have you got anything else?
I will bill you, I will bill you for my time.
We appreciate you guys, we appreciate you volunteering and taking care of us. I learned out of the military that it's always nice to volunteer.
Yeah, right.
You better be amazed how many times you get volunteered this time.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I have volunteered for both of you to go on the audience. So it'll be good to go in January.
Fred, I'd be very grateful for that, because I can hear in time while people are standing. The acoustics in here, I just cannot hear.
Especially Chair Wells.
Well, they do, they have.
I can't hear in my ear.
Everybody has a mic, everybody has. Right, I mean, the guy explained the system to me, and I just didn't look at it a whole lot, but it's pretty loud. But it wasn't as expensive as I thought it would be. If you give me that number.
I hope I could, in fact, because that whole book, the pussy, if that's worth it.
I know it was, I didn't get it, I can't remember, but my favorite is kind of come down like some of the old cases.
It's an audio plus acoustic?
It does it all. They've done several commission rooms around, it's close enough.
And Sonny didn't, he popped in here to say that between the computer room and then he wants that desk where Tim was, like to use the desk where he can assemble. So if he could have those two areas which will work and complete the file count that we need to take up, I think I can put on the other side of the wall where Tim was on like here and I could.
So we're gonna put the. So is that made a half wall building there, or how do they want to set it?
So I talked to both Devon and.
Keep it open.
I could just leave it open for now, they both said they will find a sharing office. I had said, you know, if you have confidence that you're meeting with somebody or you need to make private phone calls, you go in the commission room.
Exactly.
And shut the door, but both of them will completely find a sharing office and.
All right, Fred, it's your turn.
Well, I think we need to be thinking about economic development since we got a new director. The direction we want them to go and to make sure that we don't set them on fire. We have to have some idea of what we want.
And marketing.
So keep that in mind.
We have lots of help with that because we've got the Kansas Chamber of Commerce that's helping us, or is that Gray, Gray Vanway? Right. And this calendar is up to speed on a lot of that already.
You have marketing experience.
Yes.
She may be telling us our direction more than we.
Well, right, there again.
Right. We were all out here on December fifteenth.
Fifteenth, yeah.
You can call on fifteen when we're discussing.
Not a day, not a couple of fifteenth, so we have an open meeting where we talk about the planning of zoning commission. We should be here, so everybody from accounting, whatever it is, and people about that, then we can have contact time.
Yeah, we already know that planning zoning is very important, I mean, it's actually also hand in hand.
Right, yes.
We want to get us so we're as business friendly as we can without telling ourselves we're gonna protect. We gotta protect the ag, it's the same, we gotta protect everything, but it needs to be business.
It's not bad, honestly.
I think we have to protect housing. I mean, housing's big.
We need to get some marketing down the table, so keep that in mind of how to do it. So.
So there are plenty of people that helps with that because the group in Virginia, they go to Virginia.
Yeah.
They do housing studies for us at no cost. Because they need housing and they can't get it in front of the government, so we're hooked up with that guy who's, what's her name?
Molly Davison?
Molly, yes, from Overworks, so we have a connection there that those two probably have upgraded.
Okay. So I'll move to a juror.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all post same time, we are a juror.
I'm gonna take a little break, like a break. Sorry, your session is over. A little snap. I don't think I'll make too long, but.
Okay.
Hey, will you guys have that ready so we can approve on Monday?
Yeah.
I'm gonna go, once you go to my office and do the work that I just did.
Oh, yeah, I would look to.